So at this time, I will call to order the Planning Board meeting of Currituck County of April 21st, 2017. Please rise for pledges of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum of five tonight, so we meet the rules and regulations for a quorum. I have need a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll motion to approve it.
Second?
Second.
Motion approved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Are there any disqualifications tonight that's...I'm not going to read that thing, but you know, has anybody got a problem with signs or any vested interest or any of that good stuff? Cool. All right. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our March 14th, 2017, meeting.
Still moved.
Have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in...huh?
It was two seconds.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So approved. To my knowledge, there is no old business. Anybody have any old business? Okay. If not, we'll move on to our agenda for tonight. It's PB 17-02, Currituck County Sign Ordinance Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements for a substantial rewrite of the county signage regulations to combine...to comply with a recent Supreme Court decision. I believe Ms. Jenny's going to make us feel about this one.
That's me. Thank you. So at the March meeting, I gave a brief overview of the Supreme Court case Reed versus Town of Gilbert. One of the takeaways from that case is that non-commercial speech is protected and content-based regulations are unconstitutional. Another takeaway is that our sign ordinance needs to be amended to be consistent with that ruling. So the text amendment before you tonight has been prepared based on staff's understanding of that case and considering the Board of Commissioners' direction at their January retreat. They directed staff to allow one non-commercial sign per property plus three during election season, which is okay to do because that's not necessarily a content-based regulation. Also to allow additional signs for lot frontage, for increased lot frontage with a spacing And maintain the commercial use-based exceptions in the ordinance. So in the staff report, if you have that, if you have turned to that, I've included the text amendment review standards as well as a few of the relevant land use plan policies and a statement of consistency and reasonableness. I'll just go over a couple of the land use plan policies or the consistency with the land use plan statement. The text amendment includes standards to enhance community appearance and create a quality business image by regulating sign quantity, area, height, lighting, and maintenance. That's Land Use Plan Policy CA 4. It recognizes and protects the community image benefits of the major highway corridors through continuing to incorporate sign number, area, and height restrictions. That's Land Use Plan Policy CA 1. Continues to prevent the placement of additional billboards, Land Use Plan Policy CA 5. Staff believes the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it implements changes to unconstitutional ordinance provisions to comply with the Supreme Court's ruling in Reed versus Town of Gilbert, and the proposed changes extend the protection of the First Amendment of the Constitution. So I kind of went over the legal considerations and the Board of Commissioners' direction. So in the ordinance itself, I thought I'd just kind of go through a few of the areas and just kind of highlight the changes and why they were made. In the Purpose and Intent section, we've added what's called a substitution clause, which basically ensures that we don't treat commercial speech more favorably than non-commercial, more favorably than non-commercial. In the Prohibited Signs Section 5.12.2, really not many changes, but I did add that a sign located in the sight-distance triangle or the right-of-way without an approved DOT encroachment agreement would not be permitted. So the big section that had the most changes is 5.12.4, the signs exempted from sign permit requirements. And basically, as you can see, we just struck out that whole table in that chapter. Now, pretty much all the regulations in that table, we're able to convert into text. As you can see, the NonCommercial Signs section includes the Commissioner's request to allow one temporary non-commercial sign per property at any time. An increased...you can have an additional sign if the property is actively listed or offered for sale. Another sign can be placed with an unexpired building permit. And then the...those weren't necessarily specifically asked for by the Board, but staff just thought that's a way to keep what was allowed in the ordinance still there and not really change, you know, the content. I mean, it doesn't increase the content-based problem. It just basically says if the property has this condition, then you can have an extra sign for that. I just wanted to point out in that particular section that pretty much all of the signs are incorporated into the text, but some of the sizes may vary. Some of the sign sizes have been reduced or may be reduced. For example, the contractor sign on the mainland in the table is 32 square feet, and the contractor sign in the ordinance is eight square feet. Additionally, the political signs, the political signs in the table can be 32 square feet of sign area, but in the ordinance that we proposed, you wouldn't be able to have a sign that big unless you had increased road frontage. That's item number five. One additional temporary sign placed on a property with road frontage greater than 160 feet, and an additional sign placed for each additional 100 feet of road frontage, provided that the sign area doesn't exceed 32 square feet in area, and the signs are spaced 50 feet apart. Same thing for the real estate, the subdivision signs. On the mainland, it currently allows 75 square feet. I don't think anyone's ever really used a sign that big for a subdivision sign. I think Ben mentioned earlier, those signs require, like, engineered footings. It's not generally something for real estate subdivision sign. People aren't really putting in signs that big. But the 32-square-foot sign should still be allowed based on the road frontage condition for temporary signs. Same thing for real estate commercial. It would be limited to eight square feet unless you had the additional road frontage. Those are the only kind of major changes from that table in the...well, I wouldn't consider them necessarily major, but they are changes. Moving on to Section 5.12.6, Specific Sign Standards, it's on page 10 of 19 of your packet. These are signs permitted with a valid sign permit. Just did a little bit of wordsmithing on the freestanding signs for commercial uses. The institutional signs, same thing, just kind of made a new definition of institutional and allow those signs, if they're in the business zoning districts, to be a little bit larger, and then if they're in residential or agricultural districts, to be smaller. The pennant, streamer, and banner part of that section, these are, again, these are signs that require a sign permit. Usually, the banners are...this is where the banners were allowed. It didn't specifically say banners, but that's what's usually allowed for grand openings, seasonal openings, going out of business, so we just kind of added that in there. In the shopping center signs section, there's only the one minor change, and I just wanted to point that out. The minimum setback from the right-of-way is 10 feet for signs taller than 10 feet. We've marked through that and put 12 feet, and the reason being is on the Outer Banks, the max height that you can have on the Outer Banks is 12 feet, and it's like a two-foot difference, so it just...over there, sometimes it's hard to place those signs, you know, that are higher and larger, closer to the road, because it's hard to meet that 10-foot setback from the right-of-way line. And it's not from the road edges, from the right-of-way, so they're already kind of far back from NC 12. So we just thought that change might allow shopping centers to more easily place the sign close to the road.
Just a question to back up to the institutional. Now, because I don't have the UDO in front of me, this is strictly from memory. Now, the institutional uses are allowed in the ag district, right?
They are.
So most of these places, because the ag district as it presently stands is so large, are more than likely going to be located there, so is it a penalty for those places because they're going to have to have a smaller sign?
Actually, what we've done is we've taken what the current ordinance allowed, which was the 48 square feet, and we've said if you're in residential or ag, you still get what you were always allowed to have, the 48 square feet. But if you are actually in a commercial zoning district, you can get the sign that's larger, like a business in a commercial zoning district will get.
Okay.
So we cover the shopping center. The special event signs, we pretty much, as you can see, just kind of struck out that whole section. The reason being is the intent of that part of the ordinance was to allow for, like, non-commercial events, nonprofit events, and things like that. So now, you have the ability to have one non-commercial sign per property. Those signs can be used for special events, and you don't necessarily need a permit for Now, there are some commercial businesses that have special events and have taken advantage of that portion of the sign ordinance. We haven't really come up with a good way to incorporate that into the rewrite. So if you guys have feedback on that...
Barry's Walnut Island?
Yeah, exactly.
Outer Banks Harley?
Right.
Next week for Bike Week?
Those are kind of a couple that we know of, but not really sure how to incorporate that for them.
Barry's going to do it regardless of what's there.
I think sometimes those signs are placed in the right-of-way, which is not allowed anyway.
Yeah, they're pretty close to the road.
Yeah. Any thoughts on special event signs for commercial events? Okay. So the wall signs section, one of the mainland planners suggested that we include that statement, the 20% of the wall area to which the sign is fastened, to make it just easier for permitting so everybody knows what's being used. On the Outer Banks, the previous ordinance was 32 square feet per wall of a business or business unit, and so it would be nice to have that back in the ordinance. That's what Outer Banks businesses are expecting, and so that was another change that wasn't necessarily a Reed-driven change, but just something that staff wanted you guys to consider. And then the development entrance signs, that's another one of the signs that was in the exempted table, but I think staff feels like having a permit for those signs would be good, so we can make sure that when those development entrance signs are being installed, that they're...they've been approved and their location's been approved. In the maintenance standards, the lighting, we just included a statement that sign lighting shall be full cutoff. Lighting is required to be full cutoff for non-residential uses, so that just helps the ordinance be more consistent for staff to enforce. A little bit of wordsmithing down in Section G for discontinuance. And then the definitions, we just struck through ones that we don't really need anymore and reworded some of the definitions. And that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Okay, questions? Whoopsie. Questions from the board for Jenny?
I don't have any suggestions like you asked, but I think we ought to have something for special event signs.
For commercial special event signs?
The special event signs that you were saying we were having...didn't know how to word. I don't have any suggestions on how to do that, but I'm just thinking out loud that we ought to have something to allow a special event to put up a sign of some kind. I don't know.
Well, if they're occurring on commercial property, then they're allowed to have signs that a commercial property could have.
Okay.
I think it's just if you want to allow...so think about special events, they're off-premise signs, right? So if I'm doing Bark in the Park, then I go put all the signs that say, you know, "Come buy a barbecue dinner at Bark in the Park and support the animal lovers." So nonprofits are going to be able to do that, as Jenny described, because non-commercial signs, we really can't. You know, you can't really regulate based on content. So the question for you as a planning board is if commercial entities, there's obvious ones you reference that do it every year, but if a restaurant wanted to have a, I don't know, like a festival or something or whatever, do you want to allow them to have off-premise signs promoting that event? So if a restaurant had a...
Off-premise, not necessarily out in front of their business.
Yeah, we're only talking off-premise. On your property, you have the ability to get some temporary signage.
Okay. I was thinking out in front of their business.
No, that's going to be doable, so it's just...that'll just be like...so you have to balance. I mean, how much...I don't know. I mean, it's just, do you want to have...how many...
I'm just saying...
...signage you want to have up and down the highway on spring and fall weekends when things are happening, so.
Under what you've got, if a business was putting up a banner for a special event on their own property, it's be allowed. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's some temporary signage that just is inherently given on-premise for commercial properties. I don't remember what the dimensions are. It may be like two temporary signs.
Yeah, on the mainland is two, I think, with a total of 40 square feet. But to your point, it may be feasible to include that in, like, the pennant, streamer, and banner signs, and like, if you have a special event, then maybe you can do a banner.
I was not thinking on off-site, off-premise signs. I was thinking on your own property, on your own.
And that's what the pennant and streamers would do.
I mean, if you want us to look at making sure...I mean, I don't think...I mean, that's okay, right? If you have legitimate special events, you can only do four per year, so if you have, like, a big...I can't...all I can think of is, like, sanctuary venues, they have, like, the...
Right.
What is it, the Kerry shock in the fall? They put a banner on the property.
He'll still be able to tie up a banner for that.
Yeah, I mean, probably different than putting 550 signs up and down the corridor.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can try to incorporate, make sure that's clear, that if it's on your property and it's a legitimate special event, you can promote it a little more.
It may be...I just wanted it to be clear to me.
Did you say four per year, if they're allowed?
You can have four...yeah, you can have... Four special events per year.
Okay.
So you pretty much can have one each season.
Right.
Cool.
Most places don't.
Is there a timeframe in between special events?
I think it's calendar year, four per calendar year, I believe is what the ordinance says, so...
So you could have all four in the summertime?
Yeah, that's right. You could do each month of the summer, so.
Okay.
Is that for the beach, too?
No, it's prohibited on the Outer Banks.
Can't have any fun on the beach.
I know.
I think you can have special events, but not pennant, streamer, banners.
No. Okay. Why is that?
Because we don't want any partyers over there.
Yeah, you don't want that, that's for sure.
I mean, the sign regulations, to my knowledge, have always just been more restrictive on the Outer Banks.
Just like when the surf's up, they're going to find it. That's what cell phones are for.
Probably just because it's, you know, the resort area...I know you live over there, but the resort area, I know the first one that did the sign ordinance is before you were here, but before I was here, there was a citizen committee and a group of developers and business owners that kind of came together to do it, and it just ended up being...it's always been really, really tight, so. It's what it is. I mean, not to say it's right or wrong, but I guess it's just trying to make it more aesthetically pleasing as the resort area for the county, so.
Okay.
I mean, we can converse about it some.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, the...
It's okay, just...
The commercial areas in, like, Corolla, for instance, are very isolated.
Yeah.
And something like that, I don't think would be like a detriment to the residential portion of it, if you were able to have some kind of banners or signage or something for a special event. Just my opinion.
Now, one of the things I've noticed over there is sometimes wedding parties or big parties at some of these bigger houses, they're putting the signs on the corners, you know, the highway. I'm assuming that's illegal.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, they're putting banners out there, they're putting posters out there and that type of stuff, balloons hanging on...
Most of the time, those are in the right-of-way, and they're probably not legal.
Yeah, that's kind of hard to enforce, though.
Yeah, because by the time you enforce it...
They're going to be here a week, and they're, you know, they're...
Yeah, so. If you want us...if you want us...and again, you know, the boards, we started this just to address some very specific constitutional problems, but if you...trying to think of the best way to do this, if you want to...so you're going to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and obviously you need to recommend about fixing the constitutional issues, which we don't have much choice in that, but if you want to add on some other thoughts, and I think just include that in your recommendation, and the board can either take that up next month, or they may say, no, let's do some more work on that and come back to it. But I would encourage you just have the conversation, and if there's things you're curious about, just add it into your recommendation. So if you're thinking, like, maybe we ought to look at special events more, then just kind of include that, and where and what you're thinking.
Okay. I think you answered most of my questions. I just want to make sure something...a special event, like you mentioned, sanctuary or somewhere like that, can still put up a banner when he has a special event.
Your concern, Jeff, was for the beach area?
Yes, sir.
Your concern was for the beach area?
The Outer Banks side.
How much of it goes on over there besides weddings?
Well, there's quite a bit. There's concerts, there's festivals, there's things over there that different businesses have that are not going to be able to benefit from the same thing that mainland gets, being able to put up signage and things like that. I just think that's a little one-sided. I mean, there's not...I mean, I know three businesses offhand that do one special event every summer, different times, but...
Like what? Give me...I don't go over...I avoid it like the plague during the summer, so I need an education.
Sure. Well, like Cosmos Pizza, for instance. They're up there in the town center in Corolla Lake, and they do a special event coordinated with the Mustang Music Festival. And they have a lot of the bands come over and play in the parking lot that they close off, they get permits for it, and have outside festival in the parking lot out there just for that night. And they're not able to do signage like they're able to do on the mainland, apparently.
Now, the pennant, streamers, and banners portion of the ordinance was for...is for grand openings, seasonal openings, and going out of business.
Okay.
Now, the special event signs, which was the section that we struck through...
Right.
Would be like...that would be like a non-commercial event, because the Mustang Music Festival is to benefit the fund, correct?
Correct.
So then that non-commercial sign per property would be allowed.
But, okay, the Mustang Music Festival itself is non-commercial, but what Cosmos is doing is commercial.
Right, yeah.
So they're having the bands come over after hours and things like that, and it's tied in, so I'm saying it's the same time every year. You know when it's going to happen, if you're local, but...
Yeah, that's similar to, like, the Barry's Bike Week or the...
Yeah, very similar, exactly.
Harvey Davidson, which...
I mean, I guess the question really...because that is impacted, is if you want to...because can you do on-premise temporary signs? You can on the Outer Banks.
You can only have one sandwich board sign.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's...
And off-season.
Yeah.
But right now, today, because this ordinance hasn't been changed, if you do a special event, and you get it permitted, I guess you can have three special event signs on the Outer Banks.
Right.
But you're going to lose that. So I mean, this is taking away at least three...
Yeah.
Of course, in the mainland, you could have, like, 40.
Right. And it's, you know, and that's a highly commercial area in the summertime, I mean...
What about...
I guess that's really the question, is what do you want to do with, for example, commercial special events, so.
What about the signs that, when you first cross the Dare County line, that are up there advertising, like, the wine in the park?
Those are special event signs for the county.
But they stay up all summer.
But they have weekly special events that they have...
Well, the signs that I'm thinking of, you know, as soon as you cross the line, when you're making the curve around, and to my knowledge, they stay up every...all summer because they're weekly events.
Right, correct, yes.
But can you have a temporary, you know, sign that's weekly events and it's up all summer? I mean, and I believe, I'm not sure, but I think that they're totally in the public right-of-way for the road, because it's...
You can't have them in the right-of-way, so I can answer that. Generally, signs should not be in the right-of-way.
But are they in the right-of-way now?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's tight. I'm not going to sit here and tell you they're not, because it's close.
Because, I mean, I don't know how much of that, when you first come in to Currituck County, is public land...there's no house there. There's no houses on either side, and whether the whole tract is...belongs to the county or not.
That's Audubon area, isn't it?
Audubon.
Yeah.
Huh?
Audubon owns that property, I believe.
But it's weekly special events as opposed to four per season?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's every week.
Because it's the county property. They actually come in and get permits for all the events, believe it or not.
Do they?
We permit ourselves, yes.
Even the, like, the weekly wine in the park on Wednesday nights type, okay.
They'll do one permit for, like, they'll give us...I think they still do. They used to at least give us, like, a permit for all the events for the entire summer, so.
Okay.
Is it fair to have the county exempt from the four per season, and they can have one a week?
Of course it is.
Ah!
Exactly. Thank you, to my point.
Maybe not, so I don't know. I'm not...
I mean, if the county can do it, somebody else should be able to at least come close.
But there is, when the county...anything the county ever does is different. There's an unusual level of accountability, because if you don't like it, you can vote out the commissioners that are allowing it. So remember, there always is...there always is extra accountability for the county when they do things for themselves. Now, if you want to...if you want to have a conversation about...at this point, it's going to fall under non-commercial, so quite frankly, the county could go out and probably put a sign on every single property in Currituck County, just like any other nonprofit can.
They consider themselves a nonprofit.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're not commercial.
Governmental, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a stretch.
Institutional.
Yeah. They're prerogative.
It's an institution.
Yeah.
We don't want to know what kind.
I just think at this point, if you're non-commercial, you're going to be able to have a sign on...I mean, you can put a non-commercial sign on your property, it can be whatever you want it to be, so. If animal lovers came to you or the county or whoever else and wanted to put a sign on, you can do it.
If I didn't live where I live.
Yeah, well, yes, if your neighborhood, you got all that other layer, but I think the question still is, what do you want to do with commercial, off-premise? but I think the question still is, what do you want to do with commercial off-premise signage?
Can they have four temporary signs a year, one for each event, as long as it's on their own property?
The commercials are gonna be able to have it on their own property. They're gonna be able to have two up to, what'd you say, forty square feet?
Even-
But not in Corolla, right?
Yeah.
Not in Corolla, okay, so I'm sorry, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, if, that's, that's, if you wanna look at that, that's-
And just a suggestion, I don't, I don't-
Yeah, I, I would like to look at that, because, I mean, it just seems like they're getting punished for being on the Outer Banks, I mean.
The Outer Banks is a totally different animal as far as the county's concerned.
Certainly is, but it generates a pretty good tax base.
It's a little like Key West.
Yeah.
Well, you, there, there are some similarities.
I've, I've been to both, yes, it is, I agree.
You know, as far as, you know, the aesthetics.
Yes, I agree. Well, I see that as a recommendation I'd like to pursue.
Any more discussion, guys?
Just to be clear, this is something you'd like to pursue in the future as opposed to making a recommendation to the board tonight?
I, I'm not sure how to proceed with this. I'm, I'm kind of new to this, so I don't really know. The best way-
Can you make a motion to table it? Or you can make a-
Oh, we got, I'm, I'm, I don't, I like not to table it, we need to get this to the board. Now, we can-
Will you let me finish?
I'm sorry. Keep going.
Or you can make a motion and then like add this recommendation, that recommendation you would like to be considered.
Okay.
I guess my point being, are we ready to make recommendations? You have concerns, you want, you want to look at things, but is there enough information to actually make a coherent suggestion?
There-
Tonight, is what I'm saying, as opposed to-
Probably not.
Putting it together for another time, aside from this.
Probably not, you're correct. Probably be best at another time. Put some more thought into it.
We can work on it. Seven thirty, we've got lots of time.
How is letting the center, a land speed record tonight?
Well, we can make the suggestion and pass it on to the commissioners and let them come up with the solution.
Well, just, I mean, just work through it. So you, right now, on the mainland, so on the Outer Banks, you, you can't have temporary signs on a commercial property, right? In the offseason, you can have a sandwich board sign, but during the summer, you can't. I mean, it's just, it's just, that's what it is. If you have a special event, so if I have a legitimate special event, I go to the county, get a permit, I got a ban, I'm doing it all, do you want to allow them to have one or two temporary signs for that event? If so, then, I mean, I think that let's just-
Yes, sir.
Let's walk that through and see if it makes sense.
I think it makes perfect sense. I mean, we, we-
How many, how big, how long, I mean, when do they go up, you know, you know, this, we, we can work through it, I, I think, Ms. Chairman, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairperson?
Whatever. Yeah, do whatever you need to do.
Well, I mean, it makes sense to me. I mean, it's, it's a short season up there, uh, and on the Outer Banks. We all know, it's mostly just summertime. And, uh, you've got to get, well, the getting's good, as they say, and, uh-
Well, I have to say, I don't really think it's fair.
I don't either.
For the people on the mainland to be able to do one thing, and the people in the Outer Banks to do another, I mean, they're still Currituck County.
Correct.
And like you said, they do, uh, bring a great deal of revenue in, and that's how people over there make their money, and they have a short window to do that, so I think it's kind of ridiculous that, it's kind of like me saying, well, I got to abide by this rule, but you don't.
Correct.
I don't, I don't think that makes much sense.
Well, without making special consideration to make a a spot available for everybody to use, take, take Vermont, you can't have a sign in Vermont. But they're state signs, so they say, okay, you can, you can, they, they make you rent them, you know, make you buy them, but, but it's available.
Oh, I see.
You know, so, you know, i- if they're gonna do this, then maybe the county should make these areas available for these signs to go right along with the line sign or whatever when they enter. I don't, maybe they don't have to be there, maybe it's more of a, of an entrance thing, uh, the outer, you know, the, the Corolla special event.
So off-premise instead of on-premise?
Well, the county's doing it apparently right over the border.
Well, that, that's true.
You know, I, I, I'm, you know, there's more than one way around it, I guess. You're just looking to get the word out, uh, and, and that thing can change, uh, as events come and, uh, come and go. Got to sign up for it, limited space, uh, do it so many times a year, whatever, I don't know, does it make any sense?
The, the problem that I see, especially if you add any more signs right to that area as soon as you come into the, the county, is that you've already got a, a really pretty sharp S curve.
Okay.
And tourists especially, who don't know what the sign, they stop to read the sign.
You know it better than I do.
Oh, definitely. And they, and they do, they, and so now, if you've got, you know, five signs there in one public area versus the one that we're dealing with now or something like that, you know, it's, it's, I see it could be just another traffic jam right there.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily even have to be right there, there's probably other, uh, lands that are available, or it would be on premises. You know, it just occurred to me that, that that central, you know, here's, it, it's like when you go to the mall and you, you, you go to find a store, there it is, they're all in one location, you know, that kind of a thing.
Well, that's a possibility, I understand. I, I think, I think on-premise would probably serve, it sounds to me like it'd probably work the best, in my opinion. Off-premise would be nice, like the county has, I mean, we have that as well, but, uh-
Are these your observations, can I ask, or, or have you heard this from people up there?
No, these are just my observations. I haven't heard a single word from anybody up there, but I, I'm sure they would like to hear, they have the ability to do what the mainland does. And, uh, it just, it just seems lopsided to me.
I, yeah, I think there, I may agree to an extent, but I also think that on the beach where, where, you know, the tax base is and the resort, I don't think you want to have like big billboard, I mean, some of the signage and things you see on the mainland, I, I don't think you want to have that over on the beach. I mean, part of what makes it nice is that everything's, you know how it is, it's tasteful, it's, it's first class, people are spending twenty thousand dollars a week to rent a house, so, um, I think our businesses need to be successful, and I actually agree with you on that. I just think that there can be some, there are times when some differences probably make a, make some sense to me, but-
Well, for, like you say, four times a year. I mean, it's not, they're not gonna, it wouldn't be signs that would be up all the time anyway.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you wanna, I mean, we, yeah, same thing, like the commercial, the commercial special events on the mainland need to be dealt with too, so, I mean, if you wanna, if you want to allow commercial businesses to get a properly permitted special event and have some signs, that's, that's okay. I think in your recommendation or in your discussion, let's just pick out how many, how big, and where.
What if we go by the same regulations that they have for the mainland?
You, I mean-
Well, I think if you look at the special event sign portion, which unfortunately on your packet is all, you know, straight through, you'll see that currently, if you had a special event on the Outer Banks, you could have up to three signs, each with a max area of thirty-two square feet, six feet high, on the Outer Banks, and you could erect those signs up to three days before the event and remove them within a couple of days after the event. I would suggest that'd be a good place to start for the Outer Banks. Then you could choose whether you want it to be on or off-premise.
Okay.
And if you got permission of the off-premise property owner to put that up, and you had a permit for your legitimate special event, then on the Outer Banks, you could do something similar to that.
You could add an off-premise sign as well. That, that sounds good.
Which is, which is what you're, you're kind of allowed to do now.
Right, well-
Um, I would just say, though, on the, up to, erected up to three days before and removed two days after, that cut, you know, generally you're having turnover every week up there, so I would say as long as that was there long enough to, for me to come, see the sign, know the event's happening, and then it was removed shortly after the event, that probably works. And then maybe you want to think about commercial on the mainland too, because that, that's kind of was the question. I think up to forty signs for a commercial event, or sixty signs is a lot of signs on the mainland. So, and you could place the mainland signs up to seventeen days before the event and remove them within eight days after the event.
How many signs? Forty?
Up to forty signs with a max area of six square feet, and up to ten signs with a max area of thirty-two square feet. And you get a choice, or you can do up to sixty signs each with a max area of six square feet. That's currently, that's kind of, you know-
Is, is that tied into square footage of floor space, or?
It's tied into your special event permit.
Okay, but is the event permit tied into the size of the, of the entity?
No.
I'll tell you where those numbers came from. The reason there's, that a special event allows that many signs is because, it's really because of nonprofits, which, you know, now at this point, they can have not only sixty, they can have unlimited numbers of signs because of the constitutionality of the issue, but probably five years ago, some of the nonprofits came to the board and said they wanted to be able to have, I think at the time, they said like a hundred or a hundred and fifty signs to put out to advertise, like Bark in the Park or the Business Expo, whatever it was, and I think the commissioners put a committee together, and that's how it came to be sixty or whatever, was trying to kind of appease some of the nonprofits, but again, we started like at a hundred and fifty signs, so it is a lot.
But, but that-
That number was driven really by nonprofits, and what's happened now was, um, like Berry's, for example, the example you gave earlier, now, now they can kind of take advantage of that.
Well, they would have done it anyway, but the, the, the nonprofits are doing it all up and down the corridor, and the businesses are doing it on-site.
Correct. That's, that's what basically happens.
So you've got to, I don't even like to put this into terms I'm thinking, but you, you've got a real mess and a hundred and fifty foot of road frontage, you can put sixty signs. That doesn't make any sense to me. That's cra- that's crazy. It's just mass confusion.
I think you just want a few like larger signs that were more strategically placed.
Right. And I'll give some credit, the, um, the, the Ruhrington Club, who does the Wildlife Festival? Ruhrington Club? They do a really, if you notice, they've always done a really good, they don't put a hundred signs out, they put about a dozen, maybe not, maybe eight signs out that are a little bit bigger and are really well-placed. They've, I give them a lot of credit, because they've done a good job of being smart about their signage and just putting it in the right place to promote the event. So I, I agree with Jenny, I think sometimes fewer, more strategically placed signs probably do more for advertising an event than-
And they always get a very good turnout.
Yeah, they get their point across, that's for sure.
Now, back to talking about, uh, the Outer Banks in particular, uh, we've got the nice welcome center over there, and that's an area where, even like on the bicycle run that they had this last weekend or whatever, they had the bicycle people going through that and then turning around to, you know, head back north. And that's an area that you could safely pull off there if people, if visitors and stuff knew to look for special events there. You know, even in the parking lot or something like that, where you wouldn't really be jamming up. You know, my concern at, at the county line is, is the turn, and is coming off of, you know, out of San, uh, Sanderlin and stuff like that, when you suddenly turn, so that, you know, you don't need anything else distracting you, because you've got such a curve. You're coming out of a forty-five mile zone down to a, uh, thirty-five mile zone, so, and you've got the curves, and people are like all over the road trying to read the sign, you know, so if you're further up there where there's a public beach, so all the people over on the public beach could, you know, know about the events and so forth like that, as well as, you know, a possible safety area of just going around the parking lot to the backside of the parking lot to see special event signs. You know, and then they, it may take a year or so for them to know, hey, you know, I want to know what's going on this week while I'm up here, pull in there and you've got like a big bulletin board type thing.
It's, yeah, it's kind of what I had in mind, I just threw the location out as-
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, that, and that's like halfway, so the people, you know, coming and staying in, in Pine Island, if they're headed up to Harris Teeter, they can pull over there and check out what's going on there, as well as the people coming south or whatever like that could ride in there, you know. And that's, and that's county property, I, or at least part of it is.
It's not unlike what the Welcome Center does, you know, up at the line.
No, it's not that big.
Well, yeah, I know, but they will promote events.
Right, right.
You know, if you get in line.
That's a good idea for off-premise.
Yeah. And then that way, when somebody comes to the county with wanting to promote a special event, then you say, well, this is the area where you need to, you know, coordinate and get your sign up. I mean, I just don't think, on our two-lane road with the volume of traffic that we have, you know, three months of the year, that we need any other distractions right on the road.
I agree. I'm, I'm thinking more on-premise, like I said, but, uh, but that, that's a good off-premise option, of what you just mentioned.
And I wouldn't put it over where the public back, uh, beach is, because that's already so overcrowded with parking that you're not even gonna be able to stop in there for five minutes to read a sign.
That's true.
But on the other side, um, and that's an entrance that goes into the Currituck Club, uh, the back entrance to the Currituck Club too, so.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like to me that there's a lot on the, that's been discussed. There's a lot that can go into a motion.
Yeah, I don't know where to start.
Well, there, it is a lot, and there's a lot of, not a lot of specifics for the recommendation. I guess that's, that's my only problem with the recommendation, is there, there aren't a lot of specifics.
Well, could we just, could we just simply keep it simple, and under this, uh, special event sign where you've got the number four down there, the Outer Banks, such signs may be erected up to three days, so forth, just leave that in with an addition saying that it's recommended to be up where the Welcome Center is, on the same side of the road as the Welcome Center, or as part of the parking lot or whatever is there.
Where are you?
Sure that we can-
Um, page twenty-five, packet page twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't think you can probably tell them beyond on-premise or off-premise where to put them. I guess you could through zoning districts, but I, I don't know that you can tell them like a specific parcel to put it in.
Well-
We're talking about if the county provides something for-
If the county provides the property there for special events signage. And there, and again, that's one of those things that would take, it won't happen this summer, but, uh, it would take the, the, all the rental companies and so forth like that, just to simply say, stop at the Welcome Center to see what events are here the week that you're going, that, when you come in, stop at the Welcome Center and see what's happening over on the Outer Banks for that, for the week or two that you're here.
I think what somewhat, what she's suggesting is we could leave two, three, and four the way they are and just alter one. Would that work? Is that somewhat like what you're suggesting, Jenny?
That, yeah, I mean, I think without the specific, this is the property where you can put your off-premise sign, that's-
With a permit, one could just say ten signs, thirty-two square feet, and leave the rest of it out?
Well, if you have one central location, i.e. the Welcome Center over there, then you don't have to worry about how many signs they have. You're, you know, basically allowed one sign up there, because they're all gonna be right there together. You're not gonna need to put ten signs advertising the Wine Festival, or the Running Event, or the, or the biking event.
But only get three. You only get three on the Outer Banks to begin with.
Right.
So.
Well, yes, true, but I'm just saying that if you put them all in that one location, then the tourist will know where to go to find it, and at the same time, you will only need one sign. You can, whatever event's putting it on can design whatever, uh, pretty sign they want to attract reading, reading or something like that. But there won't be a need for three signs. There won't be a need for one at the county line, and one at Harris Teeter, and one at Food Lion, you know.
I, I think his concern was that if Cosmos wants to put up a banner in front of their door on one day for a special event, that they could do so- on one day for a special event, that they could do so.
Or one weekend or something like that where you can.
But they can do that already.
No, ma'am.
No, they can't.
On their own premise.
You can do that on the mainland. You can't do it on the Outer Banks.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying. I just think things ought to be consistent between the mainland and the Outer Banks about special event signage, about most everything really, but in particular, at this point, special event signage.
So for the time being, if we reinstitute two, three, and four under G, or suggest that two, three, and four be.
Well, I don't think that, that'll alleviate the issue. I mean, does it, was that allow the Outer Banks to, to do what the mainland does as far as special event signage?
Yes.
That would?
It would, I mean, you would have to just also, like, what your suggestion, suggestion, you could leave two, three, and four, and tweak two to say a max area of thirty-two square feet and height of six feet shall be allowed, and this mark, keep on the Outer Banks marked out, so it would apply to both the mainland and the Outer Banks. And you just have three larger signs for commercial special events, and then you could still do the non-commercial events based on the revised ordinance.
Okay.
I think it's okay. So if you're a business in Curritown County and you have a special event, you can have the three larger signs. You can put them on-premise, you can put them off-premise, you can put them wherever you want to.
You just, you just need to get a permit.
The property owner, yes. Now, there's a.
Right.
I mean, I think that moves you towards, what it does actually is it keeps things basically the same for the Outer Banks.
That's what I'd like to say.
It's actually bringing the mainland back, back where the Outer Banks is, so.
If you notice, like, Brindley sponsors the Lighthouse Run.
Right.
That happens weekly. They typically put a sign like on their property for that special event.
Right, right.
Don't think they put one anywhere else over in Croll. At least it's not down by the, the county line. They wouldn't probably have permission to do it down there, anyway. Like where Audubon is, where the one first sign.
Yeah, I don't, that's what I'm saying. I don't have any idea who, who has the wine sign down there, except that it probably becomes.
Whalehead. It's Whalehead.
The Whalehead.
Mm, just the historic Croll Park.
Who do they have permission from to put the sign down there?
That's a good question. Probably Audubon.
I'll go follow up on that.
Okay.
That is a fair question. Now, I don't think this is a cop-out, but I've worked here for a decade. That sign's been there for at least ten years.
I know.
Versions of it, man, they've replaced it, but.
I know.
At some point.
Well, and, and, and the other one, not.
I don't know. How long's it been there, Jeff?
It's, yeah, fifteen, probably.
Well, and, and not to bring it up to attention, but the Corolla Chapel has several signs. And I'm not sure that they're not in the right-ofways. But they're not, they're not, they're not anywhere near as big as the, the wine sign.
So they're going to fall in non-commercial, but they still can't be in the right-ofway.
Right. Will they be institutional?
Institutionally, right, so. Yeah, they've got four or five of those. I mean, if we need, if we need to go out in the Outer Banks and evaluate some of these existing signs, that's just what we need to do. If we're bringing this new four, ordinance four, then we probably should go out there and say, all right, everybody, let's, as best we can, try to start on a level playing field.
Yes.
That's, that's okay.
I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I motion that.
I, I think that with your suggestion you had of how to rework this, it's perfect.
That sounds good.
So what you want to do in your motion is, I don't know if you, if you guys have your books, but what you want to do is, you're going to try to make a motion that says that it's consistent with the plan. What you want to say is, I move to approve whatever the item number is with the following conditions, and go through what you want to talk about, and then try to say, because the amendment is consistent with the land use, consistent with the land use plan because, or just at least say it is consistent with the land use plan is in the.
Can we say with staff recommendations and let you fill in the blank?
Yeah, item seven has the statement of consistency.
Yeah, look at item seven.
If you look on, uh, packet page ten.
There you go.
Okay, I'll, I'll give it a shot.
It starts there, where text amendment and review standards, and there's like, I've lost my separate page. I'll find it somewhere.
And you can actually look at item seven in your text amendment.
Item seven?
Yeah, which.
On page eighteen of nineteen.
I don't know the packet page, but page eighteen of the staff memo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know. At the end of the, um, text amendment, behind the definitions. You get to see item seven, statement of consistency and regularness.
Excuse me again, what page are you on? The packet page?
I don't know the packet page, but it's page eighteen of nineteen in the staff report. Item seven of your text amendment.
I got, of twenty-five, so I'm.
All right, I'll give, I'll give it a whirl.
I can't.
Make a motion to approve PB seventeen oh two. Because the amendment is consistent with the two thousand and six land use plan. It includes standards to enhance the community appearance, create the quality of business image, regulating sign quality, area height, lighting, maintenance, with LUP policy CA four. It recognizes and protects the community image, benefits of major highway corridor throughout, to incorporate the sign number, area height, and restrictions of LUP policy CA one. It continues to prevent the placement of additional billboards, LUP policy CA four. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it implements changes to the constitutional ordinance provisions to comply with the Supreme Court's ruling Reed v. Town of Gilbert, Arizona, and the proposed changes extend the protection of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. I further would like to include a recommendation to the board. They consider special event sign revision under G, two, three, and four, to reinstate those and strike any reference to the Outer Banks.
I second that.
That's a good motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, hands. Are we serious?
Flag sign unanimous. Thank you. Very nicely worded motion.
Well done, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My place over here is such a mess.
Turn out the lights. The party's over.
Terrible. Okay, let's just move on for a moment here to announcements. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Cherie for giving me a copy of everybody's name, address, how to get in touch. If you do not have one, she made some extra copies. So just see me after the meeting, and I'll be happy to share. Uh, the other thing, and this is a, uh, it's probably not a written rule, but it's something that we need to understand, I think, that we as a planning board, in the eyes of some people in this county, are looked at with some amount of authority and a great deal of knowledge, and maybe we can pull strings that somebody else can't, even though I don't believe that for a minute, but some people have that idea. So we have to understand that we have to be very careful about what we say when we're out in the public, or when we're talking to somebody in the public about a certain issue or whatever, because it might be that people are swayed by what we say, thinking that we know better than they do. And it also, in my opinion, has a negative effect, effect on our impartiality. Of course, in some of these hearings that we've had in the past, we've gotten phone calls, we've gotten emails, we've gotten letters, and that's fine. But you try really hard not it, not to let it affect your integrity and your, and the way you vote. Because you have to vote on what you hear and what you discuss here, and not because somebody said, I'd like for you to vote that way. I, uh, I just think it's really important that we remain a board of good integrity. We have a good reputation, I think, of being fair and impartial, and I very much would like to see us keep that. So when issues are coming up, or just if something's, that you hear about something might be coming up, just keep your opinion to yourself, so nobody can say, well, he said so-and-so, or she said so-and-so. And they're on the planning board, so they know, and, you know. So let's, let's do our best to keep that in mind. Thank you very much. That's all I have as far as announcements concerned. Anybody else?
I'm going to add one thing. At the next meeting, your next meeting, I don't think we have any agenda item, like regular business, public hearing items, but we are going to do a, um, I wanted to wait for Stephen to be back for this, but we're going to do an exercise on the land use plan and probably also give you an update on this Moak mega site concept. So we're actually going to do some planning at the next meeting, which will be, which will be fun, I think. So hopefully you guys can make it, make it in, in May. I think it'll be a good opportunity to understand some of the things that, that are on the horizon in terms of long-range planning. So we'll do some fun exercises and try to get some input from you guys.
Is dinner provided?
Uh, you know what we may, oh, no, I'll tell you what. I said, we may actually, we may actually be able to swing that. Maybe we'll do that, so, uh, I'll have to look at the budget.
Sounds like pizza to me.
I'll have to, I'll have to get permission from Cherie, but if I can do that, we'll, uh, maybe we'll do that. Maybe we'll kind of do like a working meeting and get in some planning issues, be a little change of pace for us.
Yeah, the Moak mega site is really an issue up there.
Yeah, everybody's talking about it, aren't they?
Oh, yeah. Like it's going to happen tomorrow.
Well, it'd be good to probably give you.
Probably you who are talking about it may not be alive when.
It's a thirty, it's a thirty-year project, so. But yes, I mean, if there's anything else, matter of fact, if you guys have any just topics you want to talk about that are planning-related, you can email those to Cherie, and we can maybe kind of build a meeting schedule, have some food, and just get into some of the planning issues, so.
Ben, a couple of meetings ago, you were mentioning about trying to combine or, or use the same people for the Board of Adjustments as, as for the Planning Board. Where is that at, or?
The Board declined to do that. They want, they want to maintain separate boards.
Okay.
The Board of Commissioners does, so we'll, we'll continue to have a planning board separate from a Board of Adjustment. Now, yeah, and I was, so one, I don't know if Donna covered this at the last meeting, but one thing that did change is, is the Planning Board will reduce to seven members, Jane, once your appointment expires. So we're going to be eight members for two years, which, which is kind of quirky, because you'll still have five, five members will still be the quorum, but of course, if you have eight here and, and you vote four to four, it goes forward as a, as a recommendation of denial or a negative, so we don't, we won't have necessarily, you know, majorities. We won't have a voting majority every meeting if everybody attends, so it'll be a little different for two years, but.
So a tie is denied?
We had that a couple of times last year.
We did. We've had it. It's come up here and there. That's right, so.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Just a question. I know you mentioned before about starting at six and not seven, and is that still?
It, it is. I want, I mean, we're working on kind of updating the rules of procedure, because my, my department has three boards, Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, and Historic Preservation Commission, and they all three have different rules of procedures, which is really, for us as staff, it would be easier to manage a similar set of rules and procedures. So I was going to pitch to all the boards that we start the meetings at six, because that is the Board of Commissioners' meeting start time. So it's your rules of procedure. If you'd like to wait for us to get everything organized, we can take it up then. If you want to take it up at your next meeting, we can bring it to you and just change your start time at the next meeting. But that's really up to the board. You could have the meeting during the day if you wanted to.
I just don't want to get confused and come at the wrong time.
Yeah. No, we couldn't do it. We can't change it till you, till you vote on it as a board, so.
Well, but if you change it to six, and then we have a working session before, then it's five.
It could be. That's correct.
Five thirty.
Sometimes they're an hour.
Not usually. They're usually about thirty minutes.
Yeah, the work sessions, I mean, they're, they're helpful in a way, but I would also argue that over the years, the Planning Board has done a great job of coming in this room and settling issues where it's on film and everybody can see it, so, but I think the work session serves a purpose, but, you know, we could do more of the work in the actual meeting, because you guys do a good job working through issues.
My favorite part of the work session is when you're a dummy head and you need to ask a question. You're not, you know, the whole world in there.
But I mean, yeah, we could try to have, you know, thirty-minute work sessions to let people get here. I mean, it's up to the board, so if, if you'd like to do six, we're going to propose that to you. If you want to wait for staff to get it to you, that's fine. If you want to take it up earlier, that's fine, too.
I'm, I'm not making the recommendation. I was just asking.
Well, maybe since.
If you guys, that's.
It's kind of informal and planning. Maybe that's something else we can.
Sure.
That sounds good. We can discuss that next time.
About the time, yes. We'll be talking about everything else.
Yeah, I think everybody deserves a vote on that one.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Because it impacts people differently. I don't care. I can have it anytime, but two o'clock looks good for me.
Well, I know, and now.
Almost it's not ten in the morning. I don't do meetings.
Jeff's from over the other side of the world, too. A couple of these meetings, especially in the wintertime, when they went to almost eleven o'clock, were pretty rough getting home.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's going to, you know, if the agendas jam with something controversial, that's going to happen.
Yeah, but it's an hour and a half drive back for, for us.
Well, and then getting home at twelve o'clock at night, depending on the tide, because I'm on the off-road area, so it's even worse.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody don't want to go home? Say no. Motion approved. Meeting adjourned.